Let me know when the red thing comes up and it's gives the impression. I was told you hit start, start to record the right hand side there and then after you hit it, just it should come up.
It says it's recording, but time is not spinning though. It says recording.
All right, well, we'll assume that it's going. Good evening. It's now 6:30. I'd like to call the Chair, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Howard Board of Appeals on this date, May 29th. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard and the Massachusetts Zoning Enabling Act. As required by law, the town may audio and video record this meeting, which we all know we are now. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During the meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board, Secretary, Attorneys presenting the case, to inform the Chair if protocol is not being followed. While in open session, those wishing to present comments or ask questions are requested. Actually, we don't have a, is there an information thing on that? Okay. We'll probably, Tim, if you can put it to the corner of the table there, that way someone, because that table there is for people presenting the case.
Is that on there?
Is that?
Yeah, this is signed and signed.
Okay, so put it on the corner of the table. Right, that way, because we, there could be, presenter could be on that table. So anyways, if you want to address the Board during open session, you're just requested to fill out that form, just looking for your name and so forth. I'd like to have the Board members identify themselves.
Tim Bailey.
Dave Nolan.
John August.
Dave Ryer.
Chris Murphy.
Brian Sullivan.
Alexander Donahue.
And Al, as clerk, would you call the first case, please?
Okay, case number 2024-10, Double K Ranch LLC, presented by attorney Brian Wall. The owner of the property is located at 41 Squanton Road, assess its map, 101 Hossen, S5-2 in the Arrow Zoning District. The applicant seeks a special permit from 325-54 nonconforming structures and uses and 325 Attachment 2 Table 2 area regulations to construct an addition on pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws, Section 325-54, National Law, 4087.
The Board of Health has indicated that a licensed septic installer, this is regarding the notices from the town departments or abutters. The Board of Health indicated that a licensed septic installer must apply for a permit to install a fully compliant septic system that will serve the dwelling. And we have an abutters letter from John Howard of 18 Daisy Street. And I'll, because it's, I will read this into the record for make sure everyone's aware of this. I don't know if you all have those, it arrived late, so you may not have it in your pocket, but concerning the request before you, the two-bedroom home in question seeks to add an additional two, seeks to add an additional two bedrooms, also garage, we consider proportion over 700 square feet. The home will retain its driveway capable of parking one vehicle. The proposed garage has a single wide eight-foot door allowing passage of a single vehicle a pass of nearly 45 feet, opening to a space of 20 by 20. The driveway slash garage design allows four vehicles, three inside, one outside, all in single file. A valet's nightmare is the car. This design seems totally impractical and will result in on-street parking more often than not. On-street parking will be on the opposite side of the Squanton Road along the shore of Long Pond. I would ask that the Board consider a modification to the design resulting in a smaller garage and a larger driveway. And he refers to drawings that he's made recommendations of. 41 Squanton resides at the intersection of Daisy Street, a paved private way. I am asking that this construction project restrict access from Daisy Street as a concrete delivery and excavator access to the site may damage the road. The project scope should include repairs to the road should it be damaged. It would be in the contractor's best interest to document the condition of Daisy Street before commencing. As I mentioned, the shore of Long Pond is adjacent to this property. The Daisy Street beach is 50 feet from the site. This is one reason I'm asking you to consider holding off demo construction until after Labor Day and limiting site access to Monday through Friday, hours 8 to 5. I will close in saying that the current owners have been good neighbors. Based upon their past use, I assume that their plan for the large garage space is seasonal storage of vehicles, boats, and all the stuff that goes with summer. My fear is that sooner or later, this property will go on the market. The large garage space, no doubt, will attract wide-eyed hobbyists building furniture, restoring classic cars, or holding weekly band practice. I would ask that the 41 Squanton deed be amended to include a statement as to the use of the 734 square feet garage be used for storage only. Thank you for consideration, John Howard, 18 Daisy Street. So, to begin things off, I'd like to have the applicant and representatives introduce themselves.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name's Brian Wall, I'm an attorney. I have an office in Sandwich. I happen to live close by in Brewster. And with me tonight is John Foley, who is with Montemoi Real Estate and Construction, which is the contractor that hopes to do the construction project for this particular proposal. May I simply begin, Mr. Chairman?
No, sure, yes, please do.
Thank you. So, tonight, we're requesting a special permit under Section 325-54 A2C of your bylaw. And as the notice was read, it's seeking approval to construct two additions onto the rear of an existing nonconforming two-bedroom dwelling. The project was submitted to the Building Department and Exhibit 1 to the letter that we submitted is a letter from the Building Commissioner indicating that he felt the construction was nonconforming in two respects, Section 325-54 nonconforming structures and Section 325 Table 32 area requirements. Our contention is that the Board of Appeals has authority to grant relief from these sections under Section 325-54 A2C. So first, I'd like to just review the existing conditions. And I have a plan here, and I see many of you have been looking at the plans that were submitted. The lot is 21,490 square feet in area, about a half an acre. It has 100 feet of frontage on Secu-Totum Road. It's improved with an existing two-bedroom, single-family ranch-style dwelling. And there are, all these conditions are shown on the existing conditions plan. Your current zoning requirements are 40,000 square feet with a minimum frontage of 150, a front setback of 25, and a side of 20, and a rear of 20. According to the assessing records of the town, the structure was built in 1946, and thus it is nonconforming. And it's nonconforming in three respects. First, the lot is undersized. You're supposed to have 40,000 square feet, and we have 21,000, almost 500. Second, it's nonconforming as to frontage because 150 is required and we have 100. And I think the most significant one is the side yard setback on the westerly side is 9.7 feet, right here. The proposal is to construct, let me just put this up. The proposal is to construct two additions at the rear of the property, and I highlighted them on this plan so that you can see it. Also to add a stone patio that will be nestled in between the two additions and to relocate an existing shed. Currently, the shed is closer to the house than as shown on the, you can see it on the existing plans, it's kind of right behind the house, and they want to move it a little bit farther back. As the notices that were read, a proposed new septic system is part of the project. The objective of the proposal is to have four bedrooms. Currently, it's a two-bedroom structure, and they want to have four. The septic system will obviously be increased to accommodate the new bedrooms. The addition on the westerly side will extend the building farther back than it currently exists. The setback of 9.7 feet will be maintained. So although there will be more structure in a nonconforming status, the existing nonconformity is being maintained and not increased. The addition on the easterly side will in fact get a little bit closer. What they're going to try to do is straighten this line out a little bit. And so this side will get a little bit closer to the side lot line than as currently existing, but it will still, it will be conforming with your bylaw by a couple of feet. The stone patio, as I said, is located in between the two additions, and the relocation of the shed is really not an issue because the rear setback is met by far. So under your bylaw, it says that if a building official determines that a proposed addition will increase the nonconformity, which your building commissioner did, a special permit can be obtained if this Board makes a finding that the alteration or extension will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity. And we contend that you can make that finding rather comfortably tonight because, again, the only increase in nonconformity is to add more structure behind the existing structure, and nothing is getting more close to the lot line than currently exists. Furthermore, if you look at the table that's on the plan of the proposed conditions, it shows that the site coverage will remain conforming. The site coverage currently is 17 percent, I'm sorry, it will go up to 17 percent where 30 percent is allowed. And as far as building coverage is concerned, it will go up to 13.2 percent whereas 15 percent is allowed. As a result, the proposed structure is still consistent with the neighborhood, consistent with your bylaw, other than the existing sideline setback of 9.7 feet. Finally, the structure is currently a single family. Obviously, it's remaining such. Although there'll be two more bedrooms, that's consistent with the neighborhood and houses today. And so our contention is that the proposal will not cause or contribute to any undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion in the neighborhood, and it's consistent with the zoning district. And so far as the comments that were made by the abutters letter, the intent is, if, you know, granted that you give the permit, the intent is to do the construction after the summer season, so that's not going to be an issue. And I found one of the comments kind of ironic. The complaint was that there might be a problem with enough parking, but the proposal is to have a garage, currently the existing structure does not. If you drove by, it looks like it has a garage door, but it's actually the living space behind that, there's no garage currently. And the proposal is to have a garage, which I think would aid in parking off-street. That's our presentation, we're very happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Tim?
Thanks for addressing your comments. Do you have any questions?
I have no questions. The only question I have, it's actually more of a technical point, is the rear yard setback, and this doesn't create any nonconformity or anything, but the existing is measured from the shed, but the proposed is measured from the building. They should both be measured from the building. Again, it doesn't create an issue, but the... Oh, I missed that.
I do understand...
It's leading, but it does not create any nonconformity, and the shed is really not an issue. But I think it's just a...
Yeah, it's a very valid point for purposes of the record, but with the setback, the rear yard is 20 feet and even the shed...
Yeah, you don't have any problem in the rear.
Yes.
Like I said, it's just a matter of the table. Makes it seem like the building's not moving, is only moving by four feet, but it's coming out a bit more than four feet here.
Certainly.
That was really the comment I had. Anything else, Josh?
Nope. Is the stone patio included in the building coverage increase?
So, I'm not the engineer, I can't say that definitively, but I believe that when they calculate site coverage, it's any structural or impervious material, so I would suspect that it's been included. And even if it's not, we're under by...
Okay, no, I know. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
I have no questions. Okay, so, again, just throwing this out, and as we consider the granting of relief and any conditions we may have, you mentioned the fact that currently there are no plans to begin construction until after Labor Day?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Because that's going to be, I expect, one of our conditions we have in there. The other thing where is the, Mr. Howard pointed out in his letter, concerns on the Daisy Street. Actually, I believe Secu-Totum, is that also a private road? That's a public road.
Comes, the main road comes in off of 124.
Okay.
It's paved up to the house.
Okay, so that's a public road. Where Daisy Street is abutting the property, does this owner have access on a private road on Daisy Street? That's one question I have with the whole Board. The question that the abutter wants to concern about is the use of Daisy Street during construction.
Mm-hmm.
And I just want to discuss that and how that, how that can be addressed to the satisfaction of both the applicant as well as, you know, the abutters. And so, since I believe you don't have frontage on Daisy Street, you have frontage on Squanton. That's what the official, the official frontage for your property is Squanton.
Correct, Secu-Totum. Yeah, that's, that's, that is the address and the main access to the house, correct.
So my question here is, what is the ax, what is the applicant's, you know, legal access to the property on, from Daisy?
It's a private road, I think that's up to the applicant and the abutter to work out.
Right, so basically...
I don't think we should get involved with that.
We don't have jurisdiction over the how Daisy Street is viewed.
I don't think we should assume jurisdiction.
Because it's a private road.
I don't know if we have it or not, but I don't, I think that's between them. It's a private street, and they can work that out if they need to.
It's not like, if you look at that street, it's not like a really good pass-through street. It would make a hell of a lot more sense to go straight in up Squanton.
I realize that.
Maybe they back into it to turn around or something, but...
Whether it's parking of trucks, things like that, utilizing, you know, I mean, they just, the point get raised, and I just want to make sure we discuss as far as what the, what the options are here. You know, I think in consideration of the abutters, abutters letter, you raised the issue. And do you feel that you can work out your access issues and not use Daisy Road?
Yes, if I may address you, Chairman. Daisy Road, the way it weaves its way up in there, I can't see any of our large trucks, delivery trucks, concrete trucks accessing in from that way. And we'll manage all of the vehicles, they, our construction pickup trucks, things might park on the property on, alongside Daisy Road, but not on Daisy Road. We have onsite supervision every day. We'll do everything we can to keep them off of Daisy Road and instruct all of our suppliers to not use Daisy Road. It isn't a logical way to come in, you know, so, but I understand.
I agree with that.
Yeah, but I understand, yeah, of course.
The other point where is directly across the street from the property, apparently is an association beachfront?
Mm-hmm, the owner has property on the other side of Secu-Totum down to...
Oh, he does?
He does. Down, he has a hardscape patio that we did last year, approved by Conservation directly across the street.
So that, that facility is across the street, that is owned by the owner?
Yes, it is.
Right to the water?
Correct.
All right, okay. So where does the area, the associates or whatever it may be, and maybe there's association there, where do they access Long Pond?
I don't know, I would assume it's Daisy Street or to the right as you look at Long Pond. I don't know.
But the area directly in front is owned by the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. So I just, I'm asking that question due to what...
I understand completely.
You know, how work on a property might on, particularly on weekends, impede.
Yep, understand completely.
The other point that Mr. Howard brought out was, you know, requesting, you know, the hours during the week, Monday through Friday, so.
Yep, well...
Is that anything that you feel that can be worked out?
Most of our crews work on Saturdays. I would say we work six days a week. We work within the hours dictated by the town we work in. I don't see any issues being there. We're, we're based in Chatham, we work in all the local towns, we're good neighbors. Like I said, we'll be onsite every day. We will address any other concerns that might pop up from our subcontractors, but I don't foresee any issues there. I did remember him saying about repairing the road if we use the road. I think we'll have a discussion with the, with the owners of the road, and we'll talk about it before we start. And if there's something that needs to be repaired from us doing it, we'd be happy to do that when the project's completed. We probably aren't starting until, I would say, late October.
We can't make that a condition.
I understand.
All right, but the fact that, would like to see if you do, do that, and of course, would regarding on Sundays, are you going to be working at all, in all Sundays?
Be honest with you, Chairman, it depends on how we're doing weather-wise. Again, we're not going to be starting anytime in what I would call the pond season, will be after Labor Day. The owners use the house themselves, and they're typically here till Columbus Day or later. I, you know, it's going to take us a while to get through the permitting process, but we can, we can make a good try at not having our guys working on Sunday.
Again, the one condition we, I'm sure we'll be making is the fact that the construction, you know, between Memorial Day and Labor Day.
Yep.
Al?
I have no questions.
Okay.
I can't answer them.
The, I'd like to now ask for a public session?
So, okay.
I'd like to start public session.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the Board? Yes, please, if you could, come up, stand at the end of the table, I appreciate it.
I am John Howard, I'm the guy that wrote it.
Okay, John?
And I'm looking forward to it. You've got to sign in.
You signed in already?
I did.
Great, thank you.
If there's a house in the neighborhood that needs some tend to love and care, this is it. But what I will say, and if I can look at it just real quick, I don't know if there's an effort based on conservation or whatever the case may be, to stay within the existing structure or to utilize the entire existing structure, but where the garage is, there currently isn't a garage. So if you were to look at the corner of this table and say, "I'm going to take this eight feet and run it all the way down here," and then open a 20 by 20 space with a driveway for one car, and I do want to back up, it's not consistent with the neighborhood. Of all the waterfront properties, there's only a couple with a garage. And of the entire Pleasant Lake neighborhood, there's nobody with a 700-foot garage. So consistency doesn't fall into that conversation. But what I would ask, so this is currently the boundary of the structure, and if there's an effort to utilize that entire structure, then they're doing that. But, you know, my contention or recommendation, not that anyone's looking at my recommendation, but is to remove this first 18 feet of structure. Put the garage door back here and give you realistically a three-car parking area on the property, because nobody's going to use the garage on beach day. So you're going to have four cars there, one in the driveway, three along the road. And not that there's going to be fire engines coming, but a fire engine could never make that corner from Daisy and Squanton to the car's parking. Now, that's, you know, that's my only thing. And again, as I close the conversation, you know, however this works out, I assume the garage is going to go in as planned. But, you know, I had conditions put on my deed when I moved from my last property. It was relative to expanding bedroom quantities. That space just screams, you know, great room or party room, or whatever the case may be. And even if these guys, I mean, like I said, they're good neighbors, and I'm sure that they're not going to hold reggae fest there, but as the property turns over, there is the potential for a change of use, which I don't want to see happen.
Okay.
It's just too close to everybody.
Thank you.
Do cars currently park on that street in summer season?
Well, only, obviously only the people that live there. But no, it's, I don't want to say it's frowned upon. There's only...
People, but people do park on the street right now.
This property and Domos next door, they're the only two people that have kind of created a parking spot in that center of the street. You'd have to check with the Conservation Commission to see if they actually allow it, but people seem to do what they want.
Is there anyone else on public that would like to be heard? Hearing none, it's like to...
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay, Dave.
Second.
Voting on closing?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris? Do you vote? Okay. Tonight on this, voting on this Board here will be Al, David Nunley, Chris Murphy, David Ryer, and John August.
Okay, I need to make a disclosure that I do know the construction manager through our church that would not affect my objectivity in voting, but if there's any concern, you could have someone else vote, and I won.
Anyone have any concerns on this? Okay. All right, I'd like to now entertain any discussion by the Board, further discussion?
I think the proposal meets the requirements of the bylaw and the Gale case. They're intensifying one or more existing nonconformities. They're not adding any new nonconformities, and I don't believe this would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the present arrangement of the structure. I think we do need the time restriction on construction, our standard restriction. Parking, I think that's something, it's going to be not during construction, it's going to be after the fact. And again, I think if there's an issue, and I understand the resident, but I think he needs to deal with the police department on that, if parking's not allowed on Secu-Totum. I don't think we have the ability to put a restriction on future parking on a public road.
I would agree with that. The, during, I apologize, I didn't ask this question. During construction, what is your anticipation of maintaining vehicles on the property?
We will, they will all be parked on the property. We will not park anything in the street. We'll make that a stipulation of everything that works for us.
So another stipulation recommending the fact is, so if we improve project, all construction vehicles be parked on the applicant's property and not at any public street or road. Okay. Any other discussion? All right.
I just, I have one question. Is there, was there any consideration to putting like a gravel pull-off to the, I guess it would be the east of the paved driveway? It looks like there's enough room there, there's 20 some odd feet.
I don't know, I can't, I can't answer that, other than, we're trying to maintain the front of the house as it is. And as the gentleman said, it really needs a lot of TLC. We're not changing any of the windows in the front of the house, we're putting in a new entry next to the new garage. But to your point, Dave, you're thinking of, as we look at the front of the garage, the gravel parking area to the left, not in front of the door or to the left of the garage?
Well, if we, if we turn it around this way, it would be to the left.
Yeah, okay. Consideration, but I don't think, what's our, what's our sideline there, Brian? I forget.
I don't think we should make it a condition, but I do think you ought to talk to...
Sure.
The homeowners, the applicants about it, just to maintain good relations with the neighbors.
Of course.
Because they could, just with gravel, I mean, it's not going to really affect the appearance. I've got one big enough for two cars and a couple hundred bucks.
And part of the larger garages, to keep the cars off, you know, get it, put them away. They, they have a few properties where they don't have garages, and this is a design to get them off the street, get them out of the front of the house. It is a beautiful waterfront area, and the last thing you want is a bunch of cars parked in front. So that's the intention of the oversized garage.
Right, well, okay, I just throw it out for consideration.
Sure. I have nothing further, Brian, thanks.
Okay. The Chair will now entertain, you know, a motion to, actually to close all discussion. So, okay. You have a second on that? David, okay. Vote on to close discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'd like to ask a clerk to make a motion on this case. All right. I'd like to ask a clerk to make a motion on this case.
Case number 2024-10, Double K Ranch LLC, with attorney Brian J. Wall. The owner of the property is located at 41 Squawton Road, assesses map 101 parcel S5-2 in the R H 2 zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit for this proposed construction. Granted is consistent with Dale, Gale, Diedrich, and related cases that are will be an intensification of one or more existing nonconformities. No new nonconformities, no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing nonconforming lot. And as the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereunto is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with the application. Said grant approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscape between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. Secondly, that the life of the approved project shall, all construction vehicle will be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public or private road.
You can't say private.
I didn't say private. Okay. A violation in the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 7 and the Howard zoning bylaws as these may be amended from time to time.
I just want to, if I might, just wanted to add that, since we get all the details in, Al, I could add this, the fact that the, he's granted the special permit to construct in addition patio retaining wall, not performing single-family dwelling pursuant to Howard zoning bylaws 325-54 and MGL Chapter 48, Section 6.
I'll second that motion.
I have a vote and motion, please.
Aye.
Aye.
All approved. Five zero. Thank you. You have your.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. We asked the clerk to, Al, to call the next case.
Case number 2024-11, CLS Properties LLC, with attorney William D. Crowell. Owner of the property located 11 Atlantic Ave, Atlantic Street, assesses map 6B parcel L144 in the RH 2 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or alternative, a variance from 325-54 nonconforming structures and uses of 325, Attachment 2, Table 2, Area Regulation 325, Attachment 3, Table 3, Heightened Bulk Regulation 2, Raise and Replace, Pre-existing Nonconforming Single Family Dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 345-54 and 52 and Master of Law Chapter 48, Section 10 and 6.
Okay. The only regarding department notices, comments were received from the Conservation Department stating 11 Atlantic Street have been granted a notice of intent. The Board of Health indicated the project has been approved on November 21, 2023 with several conditions. And I don't, unless anyone wants it, we don't, I don't believe need to read the conditions of that. And I know the comments from the town departments or butters were received and I'm aware of. The chair asked the applicant representative to do this themselves.
Thank you, Chair. Attorney William Crowell from Howardport, representing CLS Properties LLC. The principal, Steve McCabe, is seated. And he is here for the LLC. And Mike Tartamella, seated next to me, is from Patrick Ahern Architects and developed the pictures and the building and elevation plans that you have before you. I also asked my law partner, Mike Donovan, to attend this evening. You've met him on a couple of occasions and he was here a month ago while I was away. So he's here for backup in case I fail miserably.
I can only point out that the last meeting, he failed to give us any type of history regarding the law of the town. And we were very disappointed of that.
Not every board says that to me. Most of it, could you get on with it?
So I just wanted to know.
I enjoy giving some background.
So I do believe I asked him a question, which he answered, which is very good. So I got, I did get some education.
Excellent. I have a few things, but I will hold off for now. In any event, this property is down in, and I wanted to point out that the Conservation Commission not only issued a notice of intent, but they issued an order of conditions. They had a hearing and they've issued an order of conditions that have been recorded at the Registry of Deeds on April 12. So CONCOM has approved and the Board of Health has approved this project. And their variance approval was recorded by Ryder and Wilcox on February 1, 2024 at the Registry of Deeds. So we've been through both of those boards with no issues. This property is in the campgrounds, known as, affectionately is the campgrounds down in Howardport. And it's on the water overlooking Antucket Sound. The petitioner is seeking a special permit this evening to demolish and replace the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling as per the site plan by Ryder and Wilcox, showing the proposed dwelling and an overlay of the existing dwelling dated September 19, 2023, and revised January 5 and February 28, 2024. And as I mentioned, the building and elevation plans are by Patrick Ahern Architect and they're dated April 12, 2024, Sheets A1 through A7 that you have as part of your package. I will, as, just a side comment, this property was owned by a gentleman named Eric Orne, O-R-N-E, back in, when I started practice in 1978. My first board hearing was Conservation Commission along with Will Joy from Coastal Engineering to represent Mr. Orne back in 1978 for this same property. So in going through the analysis of the setbacks, Rachel Lor has also issued a, more or less a staff report, a site summary. I don't know if you receive a copy of that from her. So you folks have that, which is very helpful, lays everything out. So on the northerly setback and going through the compliance table in my narrative that I submitted, the northerly setback from Atlantic Street will decrease somewhat from 12.6 feet to 9.1 feet. But that's mainly due to the, the front entrance that's shown on the plan. The setback of the main house is not changing. It's still staying at 12.6 and it's just the stoop, the front stoop that is at 9.1. So that reduces it somewhat, but it's already nonconforming, as you know. So we can intensify that somewhat with a special permit finding. The westerly setback is currently at 2.1. You know how it is down in the campgrounds. 2.1 is rather large in the campgrounds. But we're improving that to 5.4 feet on the westerly side. The easterly setback is nonconforming at 17.7. We're reducing that slightly to 16.5 feet. But still, again, it was previously nonconforming. The southerly setback from the coastal bank is more than 25 feet and will remain that way. The proposed dwelling, as far as site coverage, I'm sorry, building coverage is concerned, where there's a 30% max, it's currently conforming at 26.6%. That will decrease somewhat to 24.5. So we're making it better. Obviously, the footprint is decreasing slightly. The site coverage is nonconforming at 55.1%. The max is 35%. And that will decrease somewhat to, our engineer, Ryder and Wilcox says 48.8%. Rachel, for some reason, in her analysis, says 52%. I'm not sure where she's coming from on that, what she's adding in. That Ryder and Wilcox didn't, but nevertheless, it's still going down from 55.1%. It's either going down to 52 or we think it's going to 48.8. So we're decreasing the site coverage as well. So why do we have to come before you? It's because the front setback on Atlantic Street and the east, easterly setback are diminishing somewhat. Again, it's just because of the stoop on the front setback from Atlantic Street. And again, it's a little jut out on the side of, on the easterly side. But since those are technically intensifying existing nonconformities and since the, we're creating a second floor, that adds additional habitable space within the required setbacks of 25 feet from the street and 20 feet from the side. So those will constitute intensifications of existing nonconformities. You have, as part of the submission, the plot plan, as I mentioned, the building and elevation plans. You have the so-called denial letter from the Building Commissioner. I've already mentioned the Board of Health variance decision and the Conservation Commission order of conditions. And as a result, we would argue that the proposed new dwelling will not result in a substantial increase in noise, fumes, odors, congestion, traffic, or the like. It will not be, create a nuisance. And it will not result in any substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. And we would ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Al, I'll start off with you. Do you have any questions?
Seawall is not going to be touched at all. And the three staircase, the triple staircase is going to be removed and the door is being put in. Staircase.
Are you asking me?
No, I was making an observation.
Yes, okay.
I do have a question though. There is an outpipe that appears to come out. And I'm not sure whether it's from this property here or the adjacent property. Right off of the deck and you let down to the left of the pipe, it's an outpipe. I'm just curious from my own knowledge as to where that pipe comes out of.
Is it surface drainage from the street somewhere? It's not coming out of the house.
I don't know. It couldn't make, I'm just curious if you had a.
Not sure, but I think, I think that that's drainage coming from catch basin or from somewhere deeper in the campground.
Makes sense. So a town will take water from the street and dump it into the ocean there?
I don't think it's going into the ocean. It's going into the beach. It doesn't then end all the way into the beach.
There's a difference whether the distinction is.
I mean, it's heading in that direction and that's all.
Well, that beach sand will leach it, so that.
Okay.
No problem.
Just out of curiosity, because I think everybody on this board all agree on all the parking down there is stunningly in lack of area. Where are the cars actually going to reduce the front of this property? So where are the cars actually going to park? Now, when I went down there, I wasn't even, I got a relatively small car. I couldn't get my car in there without standing back out to Atlantic Avenue. So I had a parallel with the front of the building.
Well, Mr. McCabe will tell you that he has rented that property all summer to various tenants. And they'll have four and five cars. There's never been a problem. They park them in the driveways or on Atlantic Street. But there's also the public parking lot right over there, too. And the difference here now is that with the new house, the McCabe family, wife and children, are going to occupy that property as a second home in the summer and not rent it out. So there's going to be fewer cars utilizing the driveways in that area. But they do have the benefit of the proximity of the public parking lot, just one house over. Thank you. And then, he knows about the restriction, no substantial construction or destruction, demolition, or landscaping from June 30th to Labor Day, understands that. Will park construction vehicles as much as possible on the property in the driveways. But in the off-season, they can park in the public parking lot also.
When that house is razed, there's plenty of room for construction vehicles plus trash containers to throw all the debris away without getting on the street. I just basically, obviously, Atlantic Avenue and the campgrounds and it seems like all the houses there that are, again, within the code, you know, going higher, that street's going to become a canyon or a wind tunnel at some point. As far as how it's going. But I don't have any other further questions. I do agree the fact that we're obviously going to be probably questioning the date requirements, but.
No questions. Okay, we have on the, I guess it would be the north side there, between the 9.1 and the 12.6, there's like four rectangles there?
Yeah, stepping stones. Just, it was a landscape feature.
Okay, because one is outside the property line.
Yeah, it was a, it was a landscape path on, you're looking in the zoning diagram.
I'm looking at this one here.
Yeah, they're just stepping stones that. Yeah, they're just stepping stones that were used in the site plan to calculate the previous area. So that was the intent there.
So that will be then inside the property line, those pavers or whatever they are?
Yeah, we can remove the one that's outside the property.
I mean, we don't want, want to approve one that's outside. Remember, we had that issued right across the street.
Oh, yeah.
They were out in the...
Structure.
Right away, yeah.
Not a problem.
Okay. The other question, it doesn't have anything to do with anything probably, but underground lower vault, proposed microfast, does that have to do with the septic?
Underground, I'm sorry, where, where are you seeing that?
On the Atlantic Street there, up, there's a note that says proposed microfast underground lower vault and it's, it's on the property, but it's outside the structure.
But that's...
I'm assuming it has to do with the septic.
Ryder Wilcox, Leonard.
There you go.
Mentions that as the type of system.
That's, that's part of the septic system.
Okay, I've never seen that before. That's why I was just curious. Okay, and there was another little red line here that sort of has nothing to do with anything except it goes off the property, which Attorney Crowell knows. I don't like things off the property.
Which red line is that?
Right away. It would be on the westerly side up at Atlantic there. The little dash red line actually goes into the street.
Where it says 25? Right where it says 25?
It's right over here in the corner. Yeah, where it says 25, yes.
Little red line.
Whatever it is, it's existing. That's, the red is indicating existing on this plan, so that would be removed as part of the proposal.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure everything stays in the property line, that's all.
It says paved, to be removed.
I know what that is. That is, there's asphalt there in that location on the property that ties right into Atlantic Street. So that area of paved asphalt right in front of the, of the northwest corner is actually coming out.
Okay.
So there will be no parking there anymore.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. John?
I filed your 52%. It's on the September drawings, which are...
I was confident you would.
Which is part of the submitted package. I think it was in the September drawing.
Uh-huh.
And if I'm reading them right, the only difference between the two is that paved drive, which now says to be removed, which previously didn't.
Right.
So that's where Rachel got her 52%.
So that we're more accurate with the 48.8 because we're removing that?
Assuming that this is superseded the other drawing in the package.
Yeah, the drawing in the package is outdated from what was submitted by Ryder Wilcox. That was put in there as a placeholder. Ryder Wilcox submitted their application here separate from the architectural package.
So we're sticking with reducing the site coverage by about 6% from 55.1 to 48.8?
Is the proposed shell drive excluded from the building? That's permeable?
Yeah, that's permeable. Yeah, that would be permeable.
That's the only question.
No questions.
Any questions?
Now open up to any questions from the public. You heard in this case. Hearing no one, I'd say, can we have any final questions or comments?
I do not. Thank you.
I'll move to close the public hearing. Second.
Okay. And vote on closing?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, just out of curiosity, before I move to voting, I meant to ask you, Conservation Department, they granted a notice of intent. I'm a little confused what that means. They didn't say approve. What is notice of intent? I mean, assuming the fact that what they're saying here is that they've approved the project, but they called it granting, they granted a notice of intent regarding this. And I was a little confused as to what that means as far as...
I don't go to Conservation that often, but I believe when they, the applicant files a notice of intent to demolish or do something on the property.
That's what they're, so they're granting the intent that the applicant put in.
You're not really granting anything. The applicant files it.
Right.
Then they have a public hearing. They can decide whether they, they can make a determination of non-applicability if they want, but if they take it in and say, okay, we need to have a public hearing on that, then they issue an order of conditions that says, when you build this house, this is how you have to build it in an environmentally responsible manner. And then when you're done with the house, then the engineer Ryder Wilcox has to go back to Conservation and, and request a certificate of compliance.
Okay.
And they issue a compliance certificate saying, yes, you complied with our order of conditions. So that's why I pointed out that it's not just a notice of intent. We actually have the order of conditions.
Right. No, I appreciate that. The note I have on Conservation was they had granted, you know, notice of intent. And I was like saying, okay, you know, where's, where's the rest of it?
Um...
And so that's, I'm fine. It was not an issue for us tonight, just again, ongoing search for education.
I don't think it's something that they grant. It's a filing.
Yeah, okay. Voting this case will be Al Donahue, Chris Murphy, David Ryer, Tim Bailey, and John August. I can now entertain...
Are we opening for public?
Oh, we, we, we close it.
We close it.
We did close it already.
No one stepped up.
I just happened to go off.
My bad. I was reading, so.
I went off script and...
Again, if I could just point one more thing.
Sure.
And I know this has come up before and it would not change my vote on this if I'm voting, but the zoning regulations to the site coverage, including parking areas, is regardless of surface material.
Correct.
I think we've had...
So the shells and everything else has to be under site coverage?
It should be, but it doesn't appear that it's been included in the calculation.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to open up, open discussion first. Can I have a motion on that? David, anyone else want to get a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, so we're reopening discussion. Okay, so back to coverage.
And again, I think it's still not going to change the outcome, but I'm just thinking it's worth progressing.
I'm aware of what the definition is in the bylaw.
Yeah.
That it says driveways regardless of...
Surface material.
Material.
Right.
So piece stones, shells, anything that prevents water getting into the soil.
Yeah.
How it seems to consider that site coverage.
Right.
I, I think this board has wavered on that in the last six months to a year. I'm not sure.
Not quite sure. I mean, I know I recommended to the planning department that they change the bylaw for previous materials to be counted at 50% on, on coverage. So if you had 200 square feet of, of shells, it only counts for 100 square feet of coverage.
Right.
That's what I put in for.
Well, I think, you know, I bring it up only because the wavering, you know, has been an issue that's been up in other cases. The site coverage existing was already nonconforming and no matter how we do that, it will be nonconforming with the inclusion of that in there. I just think, given the issues we've had on other discussions...
Well, given here, we have site coverage is already nonconforming.
Right.
So we actually, and the fact they're showing 48.8% at the moment, and the existing is 55, so that's a, that's basically, you know, a 6% to 7% difference. So I think in that percentage wise, if we had an engineer, site engineer go back over here, we'd probably find that they, even with the additional shells and so forth, may certainly be, you know, close to within the existing 55.
Yeah, I agree with you. Again, I just want to point it out that I think we lowered it by eliminating the parking area and replacing it with a different shelled area, but the shelled area should still be in there.
Well, so if you look at the existing site plan, I'd submit to the board that you're actually reducing it quite a lot by eliminating the paved area in the front, but there's also currently a shell drive on the east side that has an extended area of pavers. All of that area is coming out as well. So even though we're still nonconforming on coverage, there is a substantial reduction in paved area with respect to driveways in the proposed.
Would agree. I just, yeah, I would agree with you. And I'm actually an advocate of the side that we should be relaxing the rules for permeable, but I just think from the standpoint of accuracy of it.
We're not trying to do the old shell game, all right?
Correct.
No fun intended.
No, no fun intended.
Go ahead.
But it's, I'll concede that it's somewhere, it seems, between the 48.8 and the, and the 52% that Rachel said. It's somewhere in there. Because what Mr. Tata Mella is pointing out is down on the east side, doesn't show real well on the Ryder Wilcox plan, but where it says proposed shell drive, below that is all existing terrace that's going away.
Yeah. Again, that's all been accounted for in the site coverage numbers, I'm sure.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we're, if, the worst case scenario, we're intensifying 55 a little bit.
Correct.
I think we're all fine with that.
Yeah, again, to me, it wouldn't change my vote or the outcome, but I just think we need to know that.
And we need to know whether you're considering shell driveways as site coverage or not.
My understanding is...
Yeah, it says impervious.
Yeah. My understanding is...
It says whether it's impervious or not. It's got to be included in site coverage.
Understood.
That's the bylaw.
Understood. And that's the way I've always proceeded until the last six months to a year.
When we have situations, I think we've, I'm not quite sure if we actually granted site coverage over the fact that we were just not concerned regarding the numbers.
I think there was a...
I don't think so, because otherwise we'd have to give a variance.
We'd have to give a variance, so I don't think we did.
I don't think we've ever done that.
There was a previous case where they excluded brick sidewalk embedded in sand as impervious, but the inclusion of it would not have changed.
Right. So I don't...
Would not have made them applicable.
Attorney Crowell, I don't, I don't believe we granted without it being on a special permit of variance. I don't think we've done that regarding the site coverage. We're just...
I wasn't suggesting that you have. I just have heard some discussion and comments and wasn't sure where you stood on it lately.
Basically, I don't, I don't believe that we're going to be fanatics over a little overage or whatever regarding a bunch of shells.
Mm-hmm.
Which are, you know, give very good drainage. That's, I think so.
Understood.
So in this situation here where we're not quite sure of the number, we're not going to continue the meeting to get an exact number.
Thank you.
That's, so we're not going to do something like that. We can guess, yeah, it looks pretty good, so for it.
Well, it doesn't make any difference because they've already exceeded it. It would either be intensifying it or the plan chose of reducing it.
As long as they're comfortable that we're reducing it to a certain extent.
Yes.
Then we're okay.
I think we're all set here. We don't need to re-verify the numbers.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to have someone I can motion to now close again.
I'll move since I...
So we got to open and reclose. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, so as I indicated, four voting in this case will be Al Donahue, Chris Murphy, David Ryer, Tim Bailey, and John August. And any further, like entertaining further discussion by the, by the board?
Okay.
Now we'll actually...
Well, we're going to put our standard condition on construction time.
Yeah, so, yeah, we obviously need to go with the June and Labor Day scenario.
They'll throw everything.
Throw it all away. Yeah, let's back up the, when, when do you plan on starting construction?
Sometime this fall.
Okay.
Post Labor Day.
All right. Al, it's court, I would entertain a motion from you.
Case number 2024-11CLS Properties. User attorney William Crowe, property located at 11 Atlantic Street Assessors map, 48 parcel L144 in RH2 zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from 32554 nonconforming structures and uses, 325 Attachment 2 Table 2 Area Regulation of 325 Attachment 3 Table 3 Height and Bulk Regulation to raise and replace pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws of 32554 and 52, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10 and 6. Granting is consistent with Gail Debrich and related cases as they will intensify one or more existing nonconformities and no new nonconformities and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing nonconforming lot. And as proposed, structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odors, and congestion. Relief is expressly granted here under, hereby denied. All work shall be performed and according to the plans submitted with his application, said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there shall be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. That in life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on a public way of road.
Is that going to be possible?
Going to have to bring them down.
Sometimes it's going to have to be.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's possible given the little...
Yeah, I mean, you've got a concrete truck there, pouring and with a boom and...
You can't really park over the septic system either.
Why don't we get rid of two?
Okay.
Just that. This is not going to happen.
You can't, yeah.
No sense making a condition. We know it can't be met. So we'll get, we'll, everybody fine with that?
I agree.
Okay?
Yeah. Let's see.
You're on a three now.
Yeah. Okay. Additional conditions.
Well, it's here.
Yeah, violation. And the term to conditions of this special permit may be enforced is a violation of the Howard zoning bylaws and may be amended from time to time. So...
That's it? Okay. Any discussion of board on the motion?
I think you need to take out the reference to Section 10. I think we're only granted under Section 6 of Chapter 48, because 10's the variance provision. So that's not applicable to this.
Thank you.
It's in, I don't know why it's on the agenda. It is, but...
Well, possibly because...
So Al, you need to just...
Yeah.
So correct it.
We said in the alternative.
Alternative.
So I think the advertisement...
Ah, okay.
Put it in.
But I think our grant should only reference Section 6.
Yeah, you're right.
Right.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, any other further discussion, you know, as far as revisions? Okay. Mike, I have a, did you second it?
Yes.
Dave second. Voting the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved 5-0. You have your...
Thank you very much for all your consideration. Appreciate it.
Just as in aside, the one down the street where we had all the fuss where they were out on the road, their construction vehicles were parked right in the middle of Atlantic Street today when I went down there.
I will say that it used to be that the campgrounds were vacant after Labor Day. My mother started coming down here into the campgrounds, that's why we're here, from North Attleboro back in the 40s. And she said, you arrived from school, you took off your shoes, and you went barefoot until Labor Day. And then everybody went home and campgrounds were vacant. So it used to be there would be no problem with parking in the street.
Those times are gone. Now it's like April until November, December.
I'm not disappointed in that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
If we could possibly take a brief break, I'd appreciate it. And then we'll convey on the next case.
Yeah.
We'll keep the recording going.
Oh.
I sent that to you.
Yes.
Figured you hadn't seen it.
Yes. No, that's... That might be a good idea.
Yeah. What, right down here?
Yeah.
Either way, yeah, either one.
I have a few time. I know I haven't played golf. And I have dinner and dates with my friends, and I know Deans will want to have lunch.
Probably.
So I have to have a million amount of lunch. But there may be some beverages just to quench the thirst.
Usually.
Yeah.
Well, you guys are making all these tea times without me now. I feel.
We haven't, we haven't gone out yet. We haven't gone out.
Making all these reservations.
Yes. Been around. We never know where you are.
I don't know where I am.
Never know where you are.
I don't know where I am.
You're always missing.
I was in, I was in Ireland. I.
Yes, I know that.
Tried not to get, drive off the road, or drive into a construction.
So, well, back two weeks, up to Dean's I am. And Dottie has got Dean, not long, is apparently something out there that's not grass.
Right, so they want grass instead of moss.
He's on his hands and knees, as he's describing to me, scraping it all up. But he's already put the weed killer down.
Pre-emergent. That stops the shit from growing.
So he's, he's doing this. So I said, I could tell this has been in order. He is out of nothing to do with his own pollution.
He wouldn't do this.
No. So I said, I got a tool for you, because I'm exhausted just thinking about what he's doing. So I go back and I get this shovel, and it's, I don't know if he is, it's four weeds.
Yeah.
And it can take out an area of that. But why? Very simply, I was standing up. So I bring it up to him, say, let me show you how this works. And Dottie is inside the house. So in a matter of about three or four minutes, I've cut about, you know, ten, twelve feet that I already can.
Go easy, stop doing the.
I said, I'll leave it with you, okay? We'll come through. I don't need it back. Okay, I'll give her a shot.
Well, he, so the grass didn't grow.
In January.
Huh? The grass didn't grow, and I said, I said, Dean, you put a pre-emergent down, it's not going to grow. He goes, well, I took the dirt out and I put new dirt in. You said, no, that doesn't always work.
No, I know.
So he said, fine, I'm going to go out and buy more and try it again. I said, you're throwing your money away, number one. Number two, you don't plant grass even June. We're about to get into the, the heat and humidity, so.
Yeah.
You can have a conversation with him much later.
I've always had trouble growing grass until I started buying my supplies. Last time I was standing in front of a tree.
And they do work. You can't drive after. Man, they relax you. Totally relaxed.
The place is called Site One.
Site One.
Site One, the landscaping supplies, all of it. Mostly for commercial people, but I decided by myself, yeah, and the grassy, it goes great. Okay, let me just get myself organized here, folks. Thank you for the little break. Okay, Al, if everyone ready? Al, if you can call our next case, please.
Case number twenty-two-four dash twelve. Catherine Gildear, through Daniel Garillo.
Garilio.
Garilio. The owner of the property is located nine Skippers Drive Assessors map, thirty-three parcel B eighteen of our zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit from the three-twenty-five fifty-four non-conforming structures and uses, and the three-twenty-five attachment to table two area regulation to demolish pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling, save the foundation, and rebuild with two additions pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw, three-twenty-five fifty-four, ten years, chapter forty-eight, section six.
Comments received by the Board of Health stating that the licensed septic inspector must perform a Title V inspection on the system to ensure it's working properly. And I'm not aware of any other comments from other time departments, nor orders were received. And I'd like to ask the applicant to induce yourselves and, appreciate it.
Uh, my name is Daniel Garilio. I'm the owner of Go Design Build. I'll be the G C for the project. So the scope of work, what we're going to do is take the existing three-bedroom, one-bath house at nine Skippers Drive, and we are going to demolish it. We will be adding a, in addition to the north side and the east side of the building. Those will not be encroaching on any setbacks. When we start the new build, we will be taking the existing foundation and bringing it about two feet higher than what it currently is, so they can have a more accessible basement. The wall that is in question is the south wall, and is currently thirteen, thirteen foot four to the setback when it needs to be twenty, I believe. Yes. And that wall will not be touched. That will remain in the same spot. It will be an eve wall. It will not be a gable wall, which it currently is. And the new build will be a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath on top of the.
Okay. All right, so I have a few questions here. What is your expected timeframe?
To start?
Yes.
Um, probably end of summer.
And you feel your construction vehicles can be maintained on the property?
Yes.
All right, so currently, there's an existing shed on the property.
Yes.
About eight by ten, which is not shown in the plan. It's, if you're, it's right here.
Right.
Okay. So I, and I've got a couple other questions on your, on your layout, if you don't mind, I'll get into that. So what is the status of that shed?
It is just used as storage at the moment.
Right, but is it, is it going to remain on the site?
It will, will be removed.
It's going to be removed?
Yes.
Okay. I bring that up particularly because your building coverage right now, proposed, is maxed out at fifteen, well, at fifteen percent. And, you know, you're within five feet of a, you know, of the building coverage to be totally maxed out at fifteen percent. And so that shed would have to go. And it had to be a condition we got, you know, I believe, for approval. But the, I'm assuming everything was calculated without the existing of the, of the shed. Is that correct, probably?
Yes.
Now, the key issue that I have, you know, is, is on that same side, you have setbacks of twenty-two point six and twenty feet from the sideline to the foundation. However, proposed open steps to the basement, I'm assuming, and looking at the plan, because you're going to be building a foundation on that proposed addition, that these steps and the wall is going to be poured at the same time as the foundation is poured.
I believe those will be hardscape, so it will be some type of stone.
You, wait a minute, you're going down, the steps going down into the basement?
Correct. At the bottom of those stairs, there will be access to the basement.
But you're going to have a foundation, you're going to have a wall.
A retaining wall, yes, to hold the, that side of the stairs.
In my opinion, that's within the setback. And when you have that type of wall, and basically, any wall that, that gives shelter or support of any ways, it's not exempt from the setback on the code. I mean, as if it's a wall for a swimming pool, which would have to meet setback requirements. So I believe that with that sort of stairs there, you're creating a, a new non-conformity.
I think, though, under three-twenty-five eighteen E two, open terrace or steps under four feet of height can be within one-half feet, within one-half of the required setback. So if they're within ten feet, they're okay.
I don't know. I don't agree.
Why would you not agree if it's under, it's under four feet? It's going down, it's not going up.
It's going down. Now, we had, we had a similar, but it's, it's a, it's a, it's a support, it's a, it's a foundation support wall. We're creating, it's, we, matter of fact, we had a case, we had a case last, in March, similar situation, and matter of fact, they even asked a question of the attorney at the time, because he, the engineering company, actually the same one, showed that those steps, for a separate setback than they did for the foundation.
But how high is the, if the wall is under four feet, it's not going to be an issue. They can go within ten feet of the setback. How high is the wall for the steps going to be, sir?
It, well, it's going down.
It's not a wall.
It's not going up.
Wait, well, that's my point.
Yeah.
That's my point, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it falls within this exception, so it can go within one-half of the setback, because it's going down. It's not a wall going up over four feet in height.
So how do, how do, how do you, so then you would allow a pool within, within, somebody puts in for a pool, and they have foundation walls for a pool. They have to meet the setbacks at twenty feet unless it's a non-conforming lot.
I think they probably could go within half of the setback.
Not, not according to the building, not according to the building commissioner and Rachel.
Well, this one says open terrace or steps. Doesn't say pool.
I realize that.
So I'm, I'm just looking at the current case on open steps, proposed open steps to basement. I think they can go within ten feet, and they are within ten feet. They're just eyeballing it.
I mean, I'm fine with that, if that's how we can.
I mean, that would be my view. Otherwise, what does this mean here?
Yeah, because we, again, we had a similar project, and it was a port, it was a port foundation walls, and, and basically.
We have had a couple that came up in question, the port foundation wall, but they were just into a driveway, going up into the property.
That went over four feet as it went into the property. It was, it's a different set of fact, we have, going right back to the beginning, we have to really be careful about citing prior cases.
I realize.
Because we don't remember all the details.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not, I'm not trying to, no, no, it's not, I'm just trying to say another situation came up.
Right, but Al's right. I had forgotten that. It was a question of the wall starting under four feet, and as it ran back towards the garage, it went higher because of the slope.
Right.
So that was a different story.
This wall is in the ground.
That one was going up. It was a retaining wall.
This stairwell was inside the ground.
Right. This one is going down. To me, the bigger issue is on the other side, and it's not cited in the compliance table, but the proposed addition is the one in the setback on that southerly side there. See, the existing is fifteen point five, and then it's within sixteen feet. So that would be why they're here, I think, for the special permit.
Right.
That's what it looks like. That's the non-conformity.
But they don't show it on, on his table. He only shows the minimum thirteen-four, and then he shows thirteen-four on twenty feet.
Thirteen-four is the minimum. Four is, is going to stay.
Oh, I see. Okay, okay. You're right. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
But it's still, that's an intensification of a pre-existing.
Right, exactly.
Because they're building within the setback.
Okay.
What is that proposed addition on that southerly side there?
That will be part of the master bathroom, I believe. Yes.
I'm sorry, say again?
Master bathroom.
Oh, okay.
It'll be part of the master bathroom, master closet.
Okay, thank you.
Or primary.
Yes, you're right. I'm sorry. But I think that's the reason they're here, because otherwise, they beat the requirements, I think.
Just want to make sure, Dave, what, what zoning code are you referring to on the?
Uh, three-twenty-five eighteen F, F two.
All right, so that's all my questions. Now, Chris?
No questions.
No questions.
Dave, anywhere?
I have more of a curiosity question. The proposed closed-loop geothermal wells, what type of structure remains after? Is that just basically drilling down pipes that run water through the?
Correct.
Right, yeah.
So no structure remains above ground once everything's?
Correct, yes. It gets poured through into the foundation.
Right, because the one is within ten feet of the property, but that's, once you guys are done, it's installed.
Right.
And then it loops back into something in the basement, I said.
Yes.
So you're basically just pre-cooling or pre-heating?
Yep.
Water coming in?
Yep.
Interesting.
Heat pump.
So it's a part of a heat?
Heat pump.
Right?
Yeah, okay.
Pre-need.
Pre-conditioned water.
Hmm, interesting.
Yeah. How far do you have to drill down?
It depends on the location. At this location, I am unsure.
What, what typically happens?
That is a great question, and I do not have that answer.
Okay. I mean, is it fifty, or is it three hundred and fifty? You have to get out of the water table. It's going to be somewhere between the frost line.
Yeah, it's wherever the water table is at that.
Okay, all right. Oh, that's right, okay.
Will it still have a furnace? Will it be a dual system, or?
Um, I don't believe so, no. It'll just be.
They're going to rely on just that?
Yeah.
I just put a new furnace in, but it's dual, and not a well, just from the air. But I was afraid to go with just air heat pump. This might be different. I think the geo, the wells are much more efficient.
Yes, it's a small, it's a small heat pump, too.
It's going to blow the air over the cold water.
Yep.
I think it's a fireplace. It's all set.
Yep.
The only question I have, and maybe we got some paperwork after, but Rachel had written for the height of the dwelling?
Yes, I have that right here.
Okay. Application site plan, build elevation, all that conflicting information.
Yes.
Oh, yes, that was.
Did she provide it?
Yeah.
Hey, thank you. That's why we do have this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
No more questions?
I have no questions.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm going to assume that there's no one in the public who wants to be heard.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second. Scared everyone away.
So who seconded?
I did, you certainly have one else to.
All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, going to sign for this voting on this tonight. DL, Dave, Dave Ryer, John August, Dave Nutley, and Chris Murphy. Now, I entertain any further discussion by the board?
I think, notwithstanding the neighborhood, I think we, it's not that congested, but I think we should still have the construction time, just because of the noise. This is a fairly big project.
Okay, so, and you be able to maintain all your construction vehicles on the site?
Yes.
And I think we need also make a condition that the existing shed is removed. It's not showing on the plan, it's being removed, and we need to do that to qualify for 15 percent. So one of the conditions would be to remove the existing shed, and not build a new one.
Well, they can build a new one if they come, after this project's done, they can put a new shed in.
Not according to, not according to building coverage, it's less.
Well, if, but again, if they can somehow find a shed that fits the building coverage.
If it's five feet together, they, it has to be.
I understand.
They're going to be at max.
I understand, but his comment was they can never come ahead and put a storage shed in.
Well, there was exclusion if it's under 100 square feet.
No, that, I don't think that affects building coverage, that's only the setback.
Yes, that's definitely setback.
The setback, you could be, you have to be 20 feet if it's over 100.
But it's still, would have to be included in building coverage, I believe.
So need to remove, remove existing shed. All right, I'd like to entertain a, a motion by the, by the board.
All right. Okay, case number 2024-12, Catherine Milbear, through her, through, through Daniel Murillo.
Pretty good.
Thank you. Copy is located, 9 Skipper Drive, Assessors Map, 33 parcel B18 and higher zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from a 325-54 nonconforming structure and uses, at 325 attachment to Table 2 of Regulation, to raise pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling, saving the foundation, replacing two additions pursuant to the Howard Zoning Bylaw 325-54 and MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. Granting is consistent with the day of Gail and Diedrich and related cases as they may be in testification of one or more existing nonconformities, no new nonconformities, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing nonconforming lot, and as the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, congestion. Any relief not expressly granted herein is hereby denied, and all work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions: During the life of the project, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscape in between June 30. He's doing this, we don't need that one.
Excuse me?
I'm down, I'm down here for one, but he's going to, he's going to be on, he's going to be on the property.
I thought we said we were going to do, actually.
He said he can park all vehicles on the property.
Yes.
Do you still want that?
Yeah, just because of the noise.
But I mean, I guess that's one of the things, I mean, just because of, if we could set that, if that didn't have a nonconformity, they could do whatever they wanted. That's one of my issues with some of these regulations we put on.
We can put any conditions we want.
We can, doesn't mean we should.
But this, this one here, though.
Because I think we should to benefit the neighbors during the summer.
So, but, but what about the neighbor that doesn't have nonconformity? He can rip the building down tomorrow.
That's true.
All summer long.
He can, but he can do it as a right. These folks, the folks that come towards cannot do it as a right. They need permission from the town through us.
To get a special permit, but we're putting a special condition on that special permit.
Exactly.
But if your building is a home adjacent to this property, and they don't have to go before this board, like Chris says, they can do virtually anything they want.
But this is almost like, all of our cases that come before us, the people have nonconforming lots.
Right, they can, but it's.
And if it's in the neighborhood where, you know, you've got, we're looking at it as possible summertime, enjoyment of people, what's happening in the neighborhood, we typically have, have, you know, approved, putting it in a condition as to major construction, and particularly on a, on a major construction exterior, they can hammer all they want, and be cutting with saws outside the house if they're doing interior construction, but if they're putting up walls, and you've got bulldozers working on the land.
This makes, that makes all sorts of sense in the campgrounds.
Well, it makes sense here, too.
But this neighborhood is on a dead-end street.
Yeah, but the neighbors are going to be out trying to enjoy their properties in the summertime.
To the previous point, though, if a neighbor next door wants to do a similar project, they can do whatever they want.
But then they can't complain to the town, they can only complain to the neighbor.
All right.
Here, they complain to the town, because the town is giving them permission to do this. That's why we need the conditions.
Well, my recommendation, okay, my recommendation is, just hold for a second. Recommendation is, let's finish doing the motion, read everything, and then we're going to vote on the conditions, okay? All right, and if you.
Okay, during the life of the project, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day of any year. Two, that the life of, life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not in any public way or road. Three, violation of these terms and conditions, number, number, yeah, okay, numbers, the violation of terms and conditions, the special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard Zoning Bylaw, General Law 48, Section 7, and the Howard Zoning Bylaws, as these may be amended time to time. And number four, there'll be a removal of the shed from the property, and none rebuilt.
Good, by putting it there, that's assuming you know what the future's going to bring. I, I think you take that last section out saying cannot be rebuilt. It would obviously have to, if you say it has to be removed, if they were to rebuild it, they got to come through a separate case.
Well, we'll get that in discussion, okay? All right. Okay. Now, discussion on the motions here, on the conditions, first of all, the main, the main motion, does anyone have any questions on the main motion?
Yeah, before, I think we should discuss it before we second it.
I, we're not going to second, I realize that.
I agree with Chris on that last point.
Okay, so we just made removal of the existing shed, period?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, all those, those five voting, all of them in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, all right. The other condition, which seems to be an issue here, is whether or not the inclusion of, of the, the date range, June 30 through, you know, for Labor Day.
Okay, the history on this, why this condition came up was because a lot of folks were complaining about us, the Board of Appeals, allowing construction projects during the summer when people are out in the yards, having cookouts, whatever, trying to enjoy the grandkids or whatever are out there, and there's major construction going on. So that's why we put this condition in. This was not, when I first was on the board, there was no such condition. This came about, ah, gosh, I don't remember, I lose track of time, but since my time here at some point in time, we got a lot of complaints, and we decided to put that condition in for the sake of the neighbors, since it was a town approval, and people were complaining to the town, whereas if you had the right to do it, you can't complain to the town because you've got the right. Your town's not giving you permission, it's allowed by law. So that was, that was the rationale for it.
Special permits go along with special conditions.
Or variances also.
Judiciously applied.
I understand, so we're going to vote here, it's no big deal, whether or not we're, you know, going to approve this or not, all right, so, you know, it's okay, we're going to have different opinions, that's fine. So we have five people who are voting in this, again, it's Al, Dave Nutley, Chris Murphy, Dave Ryer, and John August, who wants to, I'd like to show your hands on.
Wait, I'll, should I second the motion? Because we haven't had a second yet.
We don't need a second, we're having a discussion on the.
Oh, we're still in discussion?
Still in discussion. So the question here is, you know, I'd like to have a, before we go to, you know, I'd like to have the motion squared away, who's in favor of the date consideration of you five voters?
I'll add one thing, just because I'm not voting, just to add it. That's an interesting, it makes sense how you explained it, that the town is allowing it so a neighbor could potentially complain, and the person is then going to say, oh, the town allowed it. Having said that, I've always taken it as if, how we have mentioned it, as if you can park all your construction vehicles on the property, you can work throughout the summer. And what's interesting is someone watched the video and asked me, I never knew you could do that, I would have done that. And they, that's, we're not comparing two different cases, but, so, that's how I've always taken it, is if you can fit all your construction vehicles on it, you can.
Or given the activity, given the size of the street.
Either or thing.
In either or thing, yes.
Or the level of activity of the street. You know, if you could still park all your vehicles on Atlantic Avenue, Atlantic Street, in, in, in the campgrounds for some reason which nobody probably can, there's still a lot of congestion down there, a lot more trucks coming in there, that also is the issue. It's not just the, it's the activity of the street.
Yeah, that was a no-brainer, to me.
Right, I know, but it's, it's the activity of the street as well as the ability to park on your, on your street. Like, we didn't, we didn't have a date range situation on a recent case on, on Main Street, because, you know, it's, Main Thoroughfare, plenty of cars anyways, we, we let that one, we let that one ride without having a date requirement, okay? So anyways.
But it also depends on the scope of the project.
The scope, yeah.
If they're putting a deck on, that's one thing, but when they're going to demolish and, you know, build a whole new house, that's a whole lot of activity, a whole lot of noise, that's, I mean, that's a big project.
So it's still, we would still potentially, case by case, allow construction, still allow construction activity. You're not saying that we should always have that, you're saying it's still case by case, and then in this case, you think we should have it.
Absolutely.
All right, then, I'm okay with that.
Then why in this case should we have it?
Because I think he's, what he's saying is, in fact, the extent of the, the extent of the construction. It's not just a simple, small scenario here.
You say half the things that come before us, a demolition and full replacement.
Sure, I, I hear you, Chris, you know, so, you know, vote against it.
I am. Thank you.
I'm okay with that, I mean, I'm not, you know.
And it depends on the neighborhood. Here, I think, Chris, my feeling is that houses are fairly close in this neighborhood. If this house was sitting there, and the next house was, you know, three lots down, and it's vacant, it's different model.
First of all, can I just, one thing forward here? The plan is, as indicated during this, when I asked the question, they're not going to start till the end of summer, begin with. All right? And I'm assuming by the time, you know, next June rolls around, you may have made some progress.
I would hope so.
Okay.
And if you don't, you got to stop.
Yes.
You got to stop June 30.
Yep.
Okay, so it doesn't start till the end of, end of summer anyways, but we're saying that you can't start till Labor Day, or day after Labor Day. So Tim, so far, he's in favor of the, correct? You're not going, you're not voting?
I'm not voting on it, no.
Okay.
I just want, was curious if we're keeping that still the position that we'll add a case by case or not. I'm good, I'm good with that.
So, this is all heated, this is, we don't have many heated discussions here.
Yep.
All right, Dave, Dave Nutley, what, where, where do you, where do you stand on it?
I got to say, I think it's an valid point, and I want to move forward, so I'll probably, you know, vote that, to keep that, and because he did say they're not planning to work, but it is a, you know, it is a good consideration, something we should probably talk about.
On a case basis, yeah.
You know, at the end of the day, he's right, I mean, if there's a neighbor who's going to do a full build and had, had property enough, he'd be doing the work, and, you know, these folks are already, you know, you know, already hit because they have this pre-existing condition, so it's already a negative to their property, and then we're adding a second by saying, you can't do work, but a neighbor who has a conforming property can. So it's something I think we should probably discuss at a later time, given that he said he's going to, not going to start till after the summer, I'd probably move forward and vote on it with the, with the date.
Well, he said end of summer, but we're kind of pushing him after Labor Day, okay?
Summer doesn't end September 21st.
Yeah, okay. John?
I, I really don't have a strong opinion on this one, to be honest with you.
Sounds awful.
But, yeah, I, I don't know, I'm on the fence.
Well, we need to have, all right, we have one yes, all right, one on the fence, which you're going to, you may have to make a vote here.
I think it's a moot point tonight.
I understand that, but.
It is.
It's been raised.
It's going to happen again, it's going to happen again, it's going to happen again.
This is, you know.
And this neighborhood is wide open, actually, I made a point to look at it and say, there's like five houses on this, maybe 10 houses on this.
Actually, a loop, it loops back.
Does it? But it's very, it's very quiet.
It is.
Doesn't go anywhere. It's, if there's any place where we don't need it, it's this street.
I feel like a rousing, I feel like a rousing discussion, so you're on the fence.
You talk me into it, I'll lean towards being against it.
So you're against it? All right.
If it's going to get this one moved forward, I'm okay with this case, because like you said, you'll be done by next Memorial Day, hopefully. Oh, yeah.
All right, so we have one, yea, nay, one and one, David?
Well, can we?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of this condition.
All right.
May I ask that we throw this over to another meeting and discuss, so this time we can get out of here?
Well, we're just trying to finish the motion, I'm sorry.
Finish the motion as it sits.
No, we can't. I, if we, one, one voting member of the board doesn't want.
I'll vote for it, don't worry about it.
Okay.
Well, and I think the proper way to do it is, second the motion, vote on it, if it goes down, you make the new motion without the condition.
Okay, all right. Okay, so right now, we're keeping the condition in on that at the moment, and.
I'm going to second the motion, so we can have a vote on it.
Okay.
I approve.
All right, vote on the motion, gentlemen?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approve, I observed.
Special permit's granted.
Beautiful.
After all that discussion, but it's, I understand your point.
It bothered me, I guess, because it's, because you can doesn't mean you should, and there's other situations like that we've had. There are times it makes a ton of sense, and I understand the problem you probably had back in the day.
Yeah.
And the reason you put it in.
And it was a lot more acute, because that was the chairman then.
Yeah.
No, no, but.
So I have to get the.
Personal criticism, right?
But now, but now with social media, everyone's got a opinion, and so this is going to continue to happen.
It is, but you think about the neighbors, are they going to want that during the summertime?
No, I wouldn't. I wouldn't want the other guy who wasn't nonconforming doing it either, but I'm stuck with them, but I'm not stuck with them, let's screw this guy because we can, the other guy, I do it anyway.
The difference is, in 98% of these neighbors, neighborhoods, nobody's going to be conforming, because if you look at, all the lots are going to be.
Most of the stuff that comes before us is like.
Cookie cutter.
South of Lower County Road.
I'll give you my next social security check, if you can find a conforming lot down in the campgrounds, you know?
So you're all set?
Okay, I do have a question.
You had a nice job, I might go check this out.
When will I find out about that condition?
We went down there today, my wife says.
The condition was voted approved.
Oh, it was, okay, so I can't.
Can't work between June 40 and Labor Day.
Two inches from the property.
We're coming up on the corner, but they had to redig the foundation and move it back, I remember that one.
Thank you.
And it's going to be approximately.
Yeah, that part of it.
About a week and a half before this is filed with the town clerk.
Okay.
And then you've got, I think it's 30 days, you know, before, after that filing, before you can, you'll be, you can issue a special, you know, building permit.
Okay. Alright, beautiful. Thank you, guys.
My pleasure. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I show one thing before I forget it?
Absolutely.
I wanna commend you and Amy for doing this.
You got it.
I mean, this is terrific. This, so we don't have to figure out whether the building height beats the requirement or not. The engineer certifies it and no discussion either.
And the thing Rachel puts together monthly now, these things are really great.
This is very helpful.
Now we're just gonna have to have them do it for the lot coverage.
Hebbles or shells? Oh, doesn't matter.
Again, I mean, one of the reasons why I'm kind of sticking with the lot coverage is I honestly had to dig up.
Half of your damn properties shells.
It is, our entire parking lot is shells and stone. And in order to expand my patio around the pool, I had to dig up like 140 square feet of parking area and replace it with grass, when it was just shells to begin.
As I said, we, I sat down with the, with the planning board director and, and we went over this thing here. We needed to get this thing forward and request that they get, get from the planning board and get the town meeting.
The planning board allowed them to exclude it. The sidewalk's better than sand.
Do those buildings ever get built, speaking of a closet?
They haven't even started yet.
But the, the butter, the butter, we should just reach an agreement.
They did reach the agreement.
Right, so the suit was...
He's still gonna have his deck on, what causes.
I know, I know. I don't know what the condition was.
I was just there for the taste of the Harwich, you know.
I saw your picture.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I was there last year.
I didn't know this year.
Yeah, it was pretty good. But, yeah, they haven't done anything. I walked over to their...
Well, they wouldn't do it now anyway.
Not sure at this point.
They'd have to wait till the season ends.
They'll have to go ahead and send it together.
Alright, first of all, the, the minutes from April. Does anyone have any corrections?
I was missing that real one, so.
This is a minor thing, but I just laugh about it.
What?
So I might as well mention it.
Sure.
Members of the board voting. Kristoff Murphy, the other French spelling in there for my name.
Oh.
2024-09. I probably shouldn't even brought it up, but I started laughing. I figured...
At page four, right?
Yeah, page four.
Okay.
Actually, that makes you more sophisticated.
You know, and I need that. I need that sometimes.
Nice touch. Yeah, Kristoff. Yeah, I was looking for it. That's a nice touch.
I worked with the guy Kristoff. His last job, my last job. Kristoff, he's a...
One of our tour guides.
He was a Belgian on the French side of Belgium.
Okay. A tour guide on our tour.
Flemish, not Balloon.
Kristoff, good guy.
Alright, we all set on the minutes? Alright, so all those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, you all have, in front of you, you should, I think, got a copy of the new application.
Well, it looks good to me.
And the changes aren't read.
Yep.
Now, should be clear enough.
Well, I've got two comments, of course.
Looks good.
It should be, I think, well, definition, she's got one extra F in there.
Where are you?
Oh, building height, the...
Definition.
Red down there?
Definitely.
Oh, yeah.
It should, she's got one extra F. But then it should be for building with a capital B slash structure and height with a capital H, because that's how it's defined. It's building slash structure height. In order to...
Capital H, right?
In section 325-2. And I would not reference 325-108.17. I would reference article XV11.
Why, why, okay, we're seeing definitions. And why aren't we referencing 325-108-dash?
Because I think it's too specific. If you look at the Article 17 floodplain regulations, there's definitions and everything else that ties back to...
But I, I think that she's referencing that because it gets into, there's a separate definition when you get into floodplains.
Right. But within article, within the floodplain regs, there's all kinds of definitions that that is subject to. So it's too narrow a reference.
So...
In my opinion. I, I don't care, but that's my opinion.
Well, yeah, no, no, I, oh, it's just and article. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's...
And article, okay.
That's within that article, but there's definitions that would be alcohol and maybe some other provisions.
Okay, now, now I understand what you're doing.
Just to broaden the reference, since we're telling people to look there.
Alright, good. Excellent. The only other thing that I would add on this so far, and it's, you, you think it's minor, but it's, it's, I mean, not, it shouldn't be necessary. In full-size certified plot plans, 24 inches by 36 for scale, must be legible. I mean, I've seen some of these things come in. I could, I had trouble with it. Fuzzy, couldn't hardly read it. And I just wanted to add, add the word in, in, in legible. Okay? Alright. Anybody have a problem with that?
No, it's a good idea.
I hadn't looked at what the planning board requires for scale. And it's like, here at one inch and for 20 feet. And figuring it out that it would just make claims, I mean, maybe they needed that, that bigger, that kind of scale. But we're referencing setbacks. We're not trying to figure out, you know, square footage of the septic system and so forth. We just, that's not our problem. Our problems are typically setbacks and heights. And as long as in descriptions, that's all fine. I think, I think the one inch equals 50 feet should be reasonable for us to make the termination, you know? Alright? So that's what we went with that one there. Because it was a, it was a moving, it was a moving target as to what full size meant. And then you wanna get into the three by four and a half, five that the planning board uses, you know? So I did check that out. So other than that, everybody satisfied with what we've done here?
There's another, just spelling down the bottom, the very last red one. Building is missing a D.
Um, okay.
I don't, and that one, which is sort of repetitive of the building height thing above, is, again, being a snickler for like detailing, it's average grade per the definition, right? Because it's...
Okay, so put that in, average grade...
Not top of foundation. Because the definition has that little asterisk in it that says, if, if you, if the average grade is here, you still have to drop it eight inches below the top of the foundation, right? So it's, it's not always the average grade, right?
You are explaining that to me. So the average grade, say the average grade here is, like, you know, one.
Right.
So, so...
So say, say someone built a house.
So they can go, so they can go from here up 30 feet. But you're saying it's gonna start down eight inches below that?
That's why it's really 29 and a half feet. Because say, and especially in the way it addresses, as I understand it, the zoning thing, is like if you're replacing an existing structure on a lot and everything. Say when someone originally built their house, you know, the grade, the foundation pops above the grade. Then due to landscaping and everything else, they added on a bunch of mulch, they did a bunch of other stuff. And then by the time, you know, you, you've evolved, there's only three inches down from the top of foundation down to now where the soil is. It's supposed to be eight. So the grade is measured and it's got like a, an if. There's a statement there in the end of it that says, you have to drop it down, you know, eight inches below the top of foundation in certain circumstances. So that's, I just, for me, it's sort of, you know, this with some of the other stuff is, I don't think we should be having to address these issues in this meeting, whereas I think somewhere there should have been a validation process that said, you know, I know this is what they put on their application.
Right, so...
Because that was on the drawing. And it, and it should be well before it gets to us. I, I would feel bad having to send someone back and delay them another month because the math didn't work, you know?
Alright, well, let's give example of what, alright, so for instance, I wonder about site plans tonight. Atlantic Avenue showed a proposed height at 29.8. Well, actually, based upon...
They're on a floodplain, right? So that's a separate...
No, no, but based upon, what they, what they did in their calculations is the fact that they took the average elevation of the property was, you know, say whatever footage that was, actually 45 times, it was like 15, it was like 15 feet.
Right.
And then they added, because they said that, because the, 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 the top of the, top of the house has an elevation of 45 feet.
From, from the lowest point.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's the lowest point. They base that upon average elevation of that site. They didn't take it down to eight inches.
Right, but there's a separate definition, if you're in the floodplain, that you, that the foundation must be, I think, 17 feet above the flood area. The top of foundation must be, and then you measure from there. It's, that's why she references both of these here. There's a separate definition if you're in the floodplain.
Okay, alright. So...
It's there. I was trying to find the standard one. But it, you know, I used to, you know, deal with it.
Yeah, no, this is, um, you deal with this. I don't. So, so you wanna put in the, from the average, average grade per the definition.
Yeah, I think it's...
It's like, per what definition? Is there a...
Well, she, actually, you don't need that.
Yeah, I think it's repetitive of what's above.
Bullet, it's covered already above, which the two references...
I think she covers it in the first one, then it's almost repeating the same thing.
So we can eliminate that whole one.
Just eliminate that last bullet.
Right. I think what she's saying is...
That's your point. It's covered up above.
The first bullet point is for the plot plan and the second one is for the building plans.
Okay, alright. So get that out of there.
But I, I guess my question of the board is if we start to have more and more of these things. Like this thing with the gravel, which I think is silly. I think it should be permeable. But what was submitted is not what the lot coverage is today, right? And it was minor when we varied it. But what if it's not? One of these, you know, couple of months from now, we get an application where someone's, you know, putting in a huge, you know, three-car space in front of their thing that's gonna be shelled and they exclude it from the drawings. They don't put on the application. I don't feel like we should be the ones going and comparing the application to the drawings and saying, wait a minute, you feel that way?
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, you know, so...
But, you know, we're, I mean, one reason why I've started trying to make the effort of changing it to 50%, you know, on coverage on, on permeable is that, the, the other side of it is, they do nothing, just park on the grass.
Right.
You know, so you eliminate the, you eliminate, you know, the shelves or the gravel, which people like to put in for a nice landscape. You make the yards look nice.
Yeah, it looks good. And it is permeable. But, you know, there was another, you know, not to delay work tonight, but this, the question that the guy had the objection of the parking and everything. It, in the, the table for required parking, it does say for a single-family structure, you have to have two parking spaces.
But doesn't that, I put that count...
The garage counts as one.
Right.
Right? But I'm just thinking back to other ones that we've done, like in the campground and everywhere. Like you say, where, well, those are just parked in the grass. Well, they're supposed to have a designated parking for two, two spaces.
But the existing non-conforming lot really doesn't.
Yeah. It just should be a common lot.
If the existing non-conforming lot doesn't.
Right.
I, I can, we then restrict them from putting in, raising the thing and, and putting up a, a new house and, and extra bedrooms. We probably can't.
I'm answering your question. I just think it's like, it's like two sides of the coin, right? Is on the one hand, people have to stay within the lot hours, but they also have to have two parking spaces, right?
Right.
For a single-family home. If they don't, and having two pushes them over, I think in most cases, we would grant the variance, right? Or, or the special permit. I just think what's happening is it's staying silent.
We haven't done that.
No one's saying anything about it, is what. So someone's gonna come back later and say, well, why'd you grant that?
Well, I remember...
Clearly, they...
I remember a case, I remember a case we had last summer, or I think it was...
Unless it's fraudulent, right? If they, they do something exactly fraudulent.
Yeah, but, you know...
Or a mistake. Well, I'm sorry, it's a mistake. It's the same thing as fraudulent. It wasn't right.
Still not right.
You submitted bad documentation.
That's my point. It's like, it's still, you know, I, I don't know if there's a way to, even in the, the meeting, you know, maybe one way is to allow modification of the, the application in the meeting, to say, well, let's get the right number. What are we approving, right? The, the right number. But your application doesn't match your drawings or the requirements.
Yeah, the, the main thing is, we have to, the drawings have to be accurate.
Right.
Because that's what gets filed.
Yeah.
So as long as the drawing's accurate, then we're, we're in good shape. But if it's not, um...
See, I don't think it's, it's the translation from the drawing to the compliance table.
Yep.
That's where, like, you know, they show the parking area in the drawing for the one we reviewed tonight, but they didn't include that area in the compliance table. That's being lot coverage.
But if they don't put any, they don't put the materials down on it, they don't have to.
Then it's not a parking space.
I don't know.
They don't meet the compliance, they have to.
I don't think you have to have...
No, just that, it says a structure or designated area used for parking.
You don't need to have...
Oh, designated area could be a front lawn.
It could be a, you don't need to have...
It happens constantly.
Which the, which the campground doesn't have, so...
You don't need to have, you don't need to have the parking area highlighted by some sort of coverage.
Yeah.
It can, it can be, it can be about four stakes in the ground and, and, and the grass.
It just seems, again, I guess my broad point, it just seems like every meeting we deal with one, where what's in the compliance table doesn't actually reflect what's on the drawings or being proposed.
And so often, we feel motivated to try to do the right thing by, by the apple camp and the neighbors. And sometimes we, even though we want to, we can't.
Yeah.
So, just last item, anybody have any new business they wanna bring up? Jim?
Just one thing. I've asked not to be reappointed when my term expires, the end of June. So I just wanna say, if you're not here or I'm not here in June, thanks for everything. I've enjoyed working with you guys and I wish everybody all the best.
We'll miss you.
No, you won't.
It was a learning experience.
Thanks, Chris.
I will.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna miss it, but I'm...
I'll miss it.
I've had it before. 15 years, I'm tired.
Well, if any, there is an opportunity to be here in June. That'd be great. Love to have you. So I asked, the longest-serving alternate was Tim, which I asked what he wanted to do, and he prefers to remain an alternate. And then the next longest was, was John. And John has accepted. And I've...
Congrats.
Thank you.
He, he has to, he'd go through a rigorous, you know, interview process with the town administration, the interview committee, the selectmen. I'm sure he'll do fine.
I thought that already happened, when you got, you got appointed to the alternate. I don't know what happens, actually. I thought you just signed a piece of paper.
I think you'll get, at some point here, you'll get a letter, you'll get an email that you've been appointed. And you need to go down and get sworn in and so forth. Alright? So that's gonna be the, that's gonna be the scoop.
Downtown, I'll have a couple weeks ahead of us.
And, and Dave, I, you know, I know I, I asked, I had asked Dave. He actually wanted to leave last year. And I asked him to stick around for another year because, God knows, I needed the help.
I don't think you need any help.
Right, so, I really appreciated the time and, and, you know, all the guidance and it's, it's been great.
Thank you, Dave.
Well, I think Brian is doing a great job as chair, so I'm happy to go off into the sunset.
I'll second that.
And I think we've got a good board. I, I think people are conscientious. You do your homework. It's, it's a good board. So. One last thing. I don't know if you've followed the old... committee. They didn't like to hear that, so they are hiring their own council, not town council. Now, whether they can do that or not, I don't know. I don't, I don't know.
Well, they can.
I just pointed out, very interesting.
The selectmen...
Are they paying for it themselves, or is the town paying for it as a funding?
If the selectmen approve it...
If the selectmen approve it, but...
Actually, town manager needs to prove it.
But I, I thought that was interesting, because how are they gonna pay for it otherwise, if the town doesn't approve it?
It passed the hat.
Maybe. Yeah, I thought, it's very interesting, it had a fairly good write-up.
This is, this is the Harwich or the Dennis?
Dennis, this is in Dennis.
All right, all right.
But it's literally right on the town line here.
I thought, I think, Dave, I didn't see something, that they actually pulled that off, that it's right forward in Dennis, put a stop on that whole thing.
Well, there's a lot of local opposition.
Yeah, oh, yes, yes.
It's just past a forty-B that we approved years and years ago. Were you here when we approved that one? It's down on, what do they call it, Main Street Extension?
Main Street Extension. It's right after the, the construction company.
Yeah.
You know, I hate what they named it.
And if you drive in, it looks pretty good. The residents have maintained it.
They really have.
And that looks very nice, yeah.
From the construction.
And it was the biggest one I was involved with, I think twelve or fifteen or eighteen units in there. It was a good project.
It's been on the cemetery, right? It's, after you go past the church and the cemetery, that made it a extension.
Yeah, you had to go across, Depot, I think it's Depot.
It is.
Goes one way, and you go across, and there's a, there's some businesses, there's some houses down there, and it's, you can't go any farther than the road, sort of, and it's down there.
There's body shops and everything else down there.
But they want to put in families, it's, it's single-family mothers and their kids.